We would invite all who care to stand and join us in the recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The vine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. You please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Proceed, please, as the county council comes into session this evening. Roll call, please, Mr. Rob.
Mr. Rob.
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Let it be noted for the record that Councilman Rob was ill this evening and did not feel prudent for him to come into the council chambers, so he is joining us via telephone. So thank you for doing that, Councilman Rob. I'm now entertained with a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from March 1, 2021. We have a motion by Mr. McGlocklin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the dispensing and reading of the Journal from March 1, 2021. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yea.
Mr. Rob?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
That motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. And you know, on your agenda, we're privileged this evening to have Mr. Vincent Gates, President of Ohio Health Mansfield Hospital and Ohio Health Shelby Hospital here to make a presentation. So, Mr. Yates, if you please come, and we'll hear the presentation from Ohio Health.
John, where are we delighting here, Mayor Shag? Is this okay?
I do remember that.
You tell me where you want me to go.
I remember that.
And does anyone need... I apologize, Mr. Rob. I hope you have a copy with you. Does anyone need a hard copy of my presentation?
Do you have one, Mr. Roberts?
I do.
Okay. Well, great. Well, thank you very much for having me tonight. I won't take too much of your time tonight. My name is Vincent Yates. I am the President at Ohio Health Shelby and Ohio Health Mansfield Hospitals. Two individuals have come along with me tonight. First off, many of you would recognize Cody Alber, who leads our marketing and community engagement efforts here in this region. And then, today being his first day, we thought he should come to a city council meeting. Mr. Alan Hawker is going to be our Senior Advisor at Shelby Hospital very specifically. We've got good leadership at Shelby Hospital in collaboration between the campuses, but we felt like we needed somebody who could be there most of the time. Absolutely, I will drag Alan with me to other parts of the community as well. So that's... I appreciate you guys taking a few moments with him. You know, here in April, we're going to be celebrating 100 years of service. Obviously, I'm not, we're all not, but somebody had the good value on April 19th to... or 19... 1921 to start the hospital right down the street here. And to that, we're eternally grateful. I've been up here for two and a half years now. I've been with Ohio Health for 33 years. I'm a CPA by discipline. I'm not a physician provider. I'm not an RN, so I apologize for that in advance. Prior to this role as President up in these communities, I was the CFO of the system, and prior to that, I was the President of Grand Medical Center. So, got a little bit of a varied background within this. I'm excited to be here. I wasn't quite sure exactly what it was going to be when I came into this community, but the first thing I know I had to respond to a lot was, "Well, you're going to shut Shelby Hospital down." And it's been amazing to me, the number of times I've had to address that conversation, and I will continue to address that conversation. I went as far as to have, and I'll get this wrong, but I've now started growing my hair specifically for this purpose. I had the hairdressers come down to the basement of Shelby Hospital so I could understand the rumors and where they were emanating from around this notion that we're going to shut Shelby Hospital down. Shelby Hospital is a critical access hospital. It makes a difference in this community. We need to grow on the northern side of Richland County, the west... or the eastern side of Crawford, the southern side of Huron County, and there's no reason we shouldn't be doing that. Shelby, as you'll see on the next page, serves the community as a critical access hospital. I see no reason that anybody, given the way critical access hospitals have been set up, there is no reason that anyone ever thinks about shutting down a critical access hospital. In my tenure at Ohio Health, we've shut down one critical access hospital at Ohio Health in southeastern Ohio. I'm a farm boy from outside Athens, Ohio. And the reason for that was the hospital's basically fallen off the hill. You know, when you have a facility in a structure like that, you have to do something. And that's hard to do it these days. Obviously, Mansfield's the sister hospital and is the northern hub of the Ohio Health system. Ohio Health is a $5 billion-plus-dollar system, 12 acute care hospitals, and over 35,000 associates, physicians, and volunteers. We are the largest... Shelby and Ohio Health Mansfield's the largest employer in this community. And I'm pleased to say with that that over $150,000 of revenue hopefully comes into the coffers on an annual basis to help support a lot of the things that go along around here. Feel like we have great relationships with the safety groups in this town as well. And as you can tell, over the last seven years, March 1 was the anniversary of Ohio Health taking over Ohio Health Shelby and Mansfield Hospitals, and since that time, this is a little outdated. We have now invested over $230 million of capital into these facilities, and that is not including the salary and wage changes. As you look at the facts, I'm not going to spend too much time on this because I'm going very quickly, knowing the time. But you know what you should know about what goes on over at Shelby Hospital? Emergency care, primary care, and that's not just Dr. Demir's and Dr. Chala and Dr. Sinha. We've also added Dr. Papadopoulos, Maria Zappa, homegrown, home area in this space, imaging services, and you can see the list that goes down there. I will say this for the last four or five months, and it's not just due to COVID. The inpatient census at Shelby Hospital has been pretty full on the second, third, fourth, if you know much about the hospital. That's a good indicator. That's a real good indicator for things to come. And then you begin to think, "Well, why wasn't that occurring before?" We're figuring that out, so I appreciate that very much. We also... we have ERs in Ontario, and we just opened up a National Health Center as well in this space. So, and we have urgent care facilities opening... not open on Ontario, where we are providing vaccines as we speak right now, probably just shutting them in the coming hour. And then, in about a week and a half, we will open an urgent care facility in Deuce Iris. We expect to be heavily involved in this community. Our mission, to improve the health of those we serve, means that we are invested in all of these communities around here. And that's... you know, so the way I think about that is, six county region, 370,000 people, and then I focus very specifically on Shelby as an example in this region, and that's what Alan and Cody keep us doing. On the next page, community providers with appointments available. I just want to call this out. It's not as large as I want it to be in terms of the number of providers in this community, but it's growing. So if you look at general surgery, many of you would know Dr. Thompson and the number of years that he has serviced this community. Well, Dr. Dietrich, Dr. Maxwell, and Dr. Donna Marie Packer will be doing an excellent job. They'll be here by April. They'll be here five days a week available. And I can go continue to go down that list. One of the things that we are working on with the medical staff and the associates is how to appropriately staff and get more provider coverage out here. So that'll be a big thing for us as we move forward. And you can see this list. I thought this list might be valuable for you. There's a few doctors that are not on here. So for example, in the orthopedic world, Dr. Guth does surgeries out there. Many of you might know that name. In the podiatric world, Dr. Fercaza does podiatric surgeries out there. And we will be adding another podiatric surgeon out there in the coming months. On the next page, this is just to give you a snapshot. Over the last year and a half, we have added over 35 providers into this broad county region. Just in the last 12 months, you see, we have 23 providers here. And you can see, it is a myriad of folks. Dr. Ashley Miley, as an example, will be joining us this summer. She comes from this community, and we're pretty excited about that. She will be spending time in Ontario. Hopefully, she will be pushing things into Shelby, and she'll be spending time in Gallia. That's very intentional because, as we know, a critical access hospital needs X amount of volume to do well. And we don't want to create volume. We want the volume to come here. And the reason we want volume to come here is, you're going to hear me talk about this. We're competitive from the standpoint, are we providing better quality and are we providing better service? We do those things, everything else should be agreed. On the next page, Ohio Health Employer Services. What you might not know, just in this three county region of Richland, Ashland, and Crawford County, we service over 1,000 employers. Now, that might be as much as just flu shots, but it goes all the way to having onsite clinics in some of these facilities. And Jenny Alt, who many of you might know from this community, actually leads this effort right here in this space. We're pretty excited about that. I should have said this from the beginning. We also have a governance council within the walls of Ohio Health Shelby and Ohio Health Mansfield. It started seven years ago when we made the transition. And the role and responsibility of that governance, that 13-member governance council, was to ensure that Ohio Health kept its bargain around quality and service and safety. And so, three of the members of that governance council are local folks here. Monty Fribble, Cooper Industries, you probably recognize these names. Bob Turner, Turner Pendlo, or I'll probably get that backwards and jake it knowing which one I'm missing there. And then Christine Voight, who works at Goldman Sachs. Those are three of the members actually on our executive council of our governance council. So I reference that only from the standpoint, we are very focused in this area and will continue to be. As we look in terms of being a proud community partner, I think we're heavily invested in the bicycle days. I'm not quite sure where that stands yet this year, Cody, in terms of where we're going to be at, but obviously, we're heavily invested in that. The Shelby Whitmans, we could talk about that. Shelby Foundation just had a good conversation with Perry Kimmerer in the last week. And you can see the rest of those that we're heavily invested in. As I close out, you know, my conversation here today, Cody said I had 10 minutes, so I'm paying close attention to that time clock. You know, what I want you to... what I would ask that you know is, we have a strong heritage here. It'll be 100 years. I'll look forward to celebrating that. We are not going to celebrate that the way that we would want to. We'd love to have a big event in April, invite everybody in the community and beyond and do it. So we are still working through what we are going to do. Are we going to make it a 100-year celebration in hopes that we can do something later in the... So that is still being worked out, what we're going to do there. But I want you to know, we're committed. I just left the conversation, and actually, Dr. Steve Markovich, who's our CEO at Ohio Health, and my good friend for 28 years, was at the Shelby Medical Executive Committee meeting last week, was at the Shelby Medical Staff meeting last week. And if you don't want to listen to me, listen to our CEO and/or the board members, who would say, "We're committed to this area. We're committed to Shelby Hospital." This is... there is competition in and around this areas from a healthcare perspective. That is okay. We expect to deliver on the quality and service, and that's what I want you to do. What I'd ask you to do is just be that ambassador. To keep care local, which is our mission, keep care local. We got to provide providers. But then we got to ensure that people are staying here. So I use this as... for all of the people that had a general surgery-type event in 2020, as a calendar year basis, in northern Richland County, I'm talking Clement, Shiloh, et cetera. Eight percent of them, and this is people that had a general surgery from those zip codes from that area, eight percent of them had their surgery at Shelby. That's an opportunity. And that's an opportunity for us to be more aggressive about it. And I'm not saying they all went outside of the county, but a lot of them did. And that's an opportunity for us. So what I'm asking you to do is be an ambassador. If you have questions and say, "Vince, you screwed up this," call Cody. No, I'm kidding. Call me. I'm good with that. And the flip side of that is, please, you know, I think we do a pretty good job. I'm not unwilling to say that. I want to ask you to feel... I mean, it's... I've only been up here for two and a half years. I have been with Ohio Health for 33. And the reason I've stayed with Ohio Health for 33-plus is, it's quite simply, it's the culture. We don't do everything right. We don't by any stretch. There's a lot of words in the healthcare space. I feel very good about what we do. And I would even recognize this last year, COVID. We made some tough decisions along the way over the last year. Suspending OB/OD operations for three weeks at Shelby Hospital. I can assure you, that did not go across well. But when I'm sitting there on December 7, with 89 inpatient COVID patients at Mansfield Hospital, we needed to give our... we needed to treat those patients too, and we had the ability to treat both ways. So I appreciate... I appreciate all you do to run this city, to run the community. And what I'd ask for you to feel is, do proud about the work that's done here. These associates, these physicians, they care deeply, and are very powerful. With that, Mayor Shag, I will be quiet and let you get back to business.
May I open it up if you could?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any questions or comments from council members, Mr. Martin?
You touched on it briefly, but if you could touch on it a little further, I don't want to dig down too in the weeds, but obviously, a concern, a growing concern over the last few years has been a decrease of surgeries available at Shelby. People who go in for surgeries, Ohio Health tend to get outsourced to other facilities, and we know that that creates... There's more positive outcomes for being able to have care closer to your residence at home, especially for older patients. So what is the commitment to increase the surgery load that's actually taking place at Shelby Hospital?
So if you look at surgeries that would be done on an annual basis, it has declined, and that is a... that has been and is a concern. We could talk about all the whys. The reality is, you need folks that are there a number of days a week, general surgeons being the example. So between Dr. Dietrich, Dr. Maxwell, and Dr. Donna Marie Packer, who starts there in April, they're committed to be in there five days a week. General surgery is a big piece of this. The second piece of this is what I'm going to call, and I apologize, this is the CPA speaking, not the provider, the meat and potatoes orthopedic work that needs to be done there. Dr. Leeson does a very good job. Dr. Guth does a very good job. We are being... trying to be very aggressive in terms of recruiting additional folks, both in the orthopedic and podiatric space to be at Shelby, or to at least spend that amount of time at Shelby. Those are the things that will make a difference. If you think about it, and this is the strategy, Alan, and you're going to begin to get it, um... Moving from 750 to 1,500. That is the goal. 1,500 surgeries at Shelby would keep this community sustainable from a healthcare perspective for a long period of time. 1,500 surgeries is six surgeries per day. Six. You got two very, very viable ORs there. You've got good space. It's a good facility. And we've... I know we've had some turnover in that space, and we don't need to shy away from that. We need to be transparent about what it is and what we're going toward, but that's where we could use some help too.
Because obviously, financially, as a critical access hospital, there's a financial incentive also, but the surgeries here as opposed to Mansfield or other areas. So from a broad standpoint, how is Ohio Health helping you guys and supporting you guys in increasing that surgery mission? I.e., having some of their general surgeons commit to doing one or two days a week up here?
I didn't catch you. I'm sorry.
Councilman Martin, make it.
Martin, yeah. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Couple of things. Shortly after I got up here, the first thing that you would have noticed in this community, and it's not specific to Shelby, it would be to Mansfield as well, we were losing the conversation on primary care. And where do you get most of your surgeries from? You get them if you have a strong primary care base. We had lost... not lost, we had not been winning the conversation with the primary care docs. Several had gone to a local competitor. And since that time, I want to say, in the last two and a half years, we have increased our primary care load employed at Ohio Health Mansfield and Ohio Health Shelby from 15 to 29. Now, what happens with that? And by the way, that was all Ohio Health helping us. I had to change the comp model. That wasn't done, and that has just occurred in the last year, which is a big deal. Number one. Once you do that, though, what you also find is, and I'll pick on Councilman Gates, you have some primary care docs that have very seasoned practices, and then you're bringing in newer players. That does not ramp up overnight. And so, we're working through that. Then the second piece is, you got to give them surgeons that can do the surgery. That's what we're working on. I hope I answered your question.
I just wanted to make sure that the commitment's there from Ohio Health at large to really pump in and create the capacity of the hospital.
As I referenced earlier, Dr. Steve Markovich was up here with the physicians and surgeons just last week, and is very committed to this community, as I've said many, many times. I will say, going back to the do, the one thing I would say is, the more I hear that, there's a little bit of a tinge of, "Okay, are we really doing that?" And I feel that an awful lot, and I will tell you, that keeps... that could keep you away from growing as well at the same time. So I want to be very aggressive around the conversation of, "We're here. We're here to stay. We're not going anywhere." And please put the rest of the noise behind your head. That would be my ask. Other questions, comments for me?
Mr. Gates.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if Mr. Yates could tell us, it mentions that they... 2,500 employees. Interested in the full-time equivalents at Shelby and what their payroll would be?
You're going to go a little deep for me here? We can get that back to you, Councilmember Gates. Number one, the full-time equivalents are about 150. Okay. I cannot give you the salary and wage number right off the top of my head. Know a lot of facts, but that's not one that I'm looking at right now. Are you trying to calculate the tax load that goes into... No, whoops. We employ someone who does that. I was going to say, I was looking directly right there, so.
I don't know how to do that. But, you know, the full-time equivalents, that's an important number.
It is. It is. And that's a number that you have not seen grow. And part of this growth is, there's two ways to grow that. Our second, third floor, keeping those units full is really important. The transitional care unit that we got going there is very important. And then the second piece is, Councilman... my pardon. I had it. Indicated was, is ensuring that we've got good surgeries. I would say the next piece, and I would go back to not just Chief Thompson, but I would say making sure that our ER is everything it needs to be. You ought to come into the ER and feel like you're, you know, other than the reason that you're in the ER and you don't feel good, you ought to feel like that was Wizbank service and Wizbank quality. And, you know, occasionally, you're going to get transferred out, but the reality is, that's what you should feel like. So those are the things that I think about, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I did want to say, thank you, Mr. Yates, for coming. And this is a very heartening report to me as the mayor of the City of Shelby, I think to the city council members. This is a message that I wish every single citizen could hear, and I hope they will, to media outlets. I've often said Shelby has a story, history, and a bright future. And I think that's a perfect example with Shelby Memorial Hospital. And Mr. Gates knows that history and can recite that for us in the future. But it truly does, and you are a gem to the City of Shelby. We treasure your presence here. It was April of 1981, and my wife and I enjoyed a, they call it a memory meal upon the celebration of the birth of our third child at Shelby Memorial Hospital. So we have fond memories of the hospital. I think everyone in this room does. And so it's a cherished place to us. And thank you for the investments you have made. And that is evident, like you say, in the surgery area down there. It wasn't that long ago. And for the investments that you're continuing to make. I appreciate the fact that you're a realist, that you're an optimist, and we need that realistic optimism, and that's quite a my ethic. So you are a very valued community partner to us. And I'm looking forward to the day when you can end your Nazrak vow and shave your hair off like you did in the days of yore.
For those that... for Mayor Shag, you see me. For those that have seen me pre-COVID, you would have seen about a 30-year rod of what my wife would call a razor number two on my head. That's not today yet, so.
I know. Whatever I see, that is Mr. Yates. But again, thank you so much, and it's so nice to meet Alan here too. And I'm sure we'll see more of each other down the road again, so.
Thank you for allowing us some time tonight. And please, we'll get back to you, Councilman Gates. And please, if you have other questions, comments, we will leave... You all know Cody, and Cody has a direct line to me, texts all the time. So listen, have a great evening, and I'll let you guys be. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, we're moving forward then to public comment. Does anyone here have public comments, or of course, have a seat at the council tonight? We did not receive any public comment, as far as you know, by email or mail, let's say, at all. So hearing none, we'll move forward then to reports from standing and special committees. Finance and personnel committees, Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee did meet last Thursday afternoon. Everyone should have a copy of the packet, the six pages in this council packet. We'll start with the first page and work our way through. The finance director stated that there was nothing too surprising this month, which is always good. Those of us in public office don't care for surprises, and particularly, the financial people don't like surprises, so that's good. If we look at the general fund, again, we had cash, $1.3 million, with encumbrances, $950,000 free and clear in the bank. We'll move down to the street fund. You can see there's a good balance there with the encumbrances. Park and Health, or Health and Park, as they're listed here. They, of course, are heavily funded by real estate taxes. The first half collections just ended, and so we would hope that we would get some distribution of real estate taxes in April. So that's the prediction from the finance director. I'm going to jump clear down to Fund 283, which is local. I'm gonna jump clear down to, uh, Fund Two Eighty-Three, the local coronavirus relief fund. Uh, you can see there that we have, uh, twenty-two thousand, uh, six hundred dollars free and clear of that fund. Uh, I'm gonna tag on at the end of my report, we did get an email from the Ohio Municipal League about the, uh, monies for local governments in the American Rescue Plan, and I'm gonna highlight a few of them. We get court, uh, police court building, uh, we've got encumbrance there for seventy thousand dollars. That's, uh, those are for roof repairs. The, uh, water fund, uh, we have a, uh, year-to-date change of, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars. That's, uh, that's good. Uh, I'm gonna jump back up to the sewer fund. Uh, there's been a decrease there, cashier-to-date of ten thousand dollars. Again, just being two months into the year, you know, you can't jump at any conclusions based upon just that, uh, two months' worth of report. Electric fund, nine, five point nine million dollars in cash, uh, four point eight, uh, free and clear in the bank. Uh, again, an increase of eighty-five thousand dollars in cash year-to-date. Uh, going down, uh, to the hospitalization fund, looking where we have about, uh, six hundred fifty thousand dollars there. We had some discussion about what is the optimum amount to have in, in that fund. Uh, that, that number came up to four hundred thousand dollars is optimum in, in that fund. So it may be that, uh, and of course, that, that fund can change drastically. We hope it doesn't change drastically, because if it changes drastically, that means we have, uh, city employees and/or their family members who are ill or injured, and we don't want that. But if things continue in, in good form, there's a possibility that we can, uh, approach the administrators of that, uh, of the hospitalization fund, and we can defer some monthly payments, which of course then is a benefit to all the funds that, uh, that pay into that. So that's something that the finance department is going to monitor and see what we might be able to do. The second page is where we do some comparisons, uh, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty. I'm not gonna go over those figures, but if people can see them. We go down to the, the general fund revenue, uh, the one forty-three county grants and aids. We can see that we had, uh, sixty-eight thousand dollars in revenue this year, and last year it was only, uh, twenty-four hundred dollars. The difference is, uh, has to do with, uh, the county's reimbursement, reimbursement of court expenses. They pay a certain percentage of, uh, the judge's salary, the bailor's salary, the clerk's salary. Last year that was in discussion. Dispute is probably a hard word, but in, in discussion. Uh, that's not the case this year, and so it got paid, uh, in, in February as opposed to, I believe the finance director said it might have been April last year. So that's a good thing. Uh, the wages, the differential in the general fund, up three and a half percent. That's, uh, that's not a surprise considering, uh, overtime and some, uh, uh, salary increases in, uh, in the, in the, uh, with the FOP. Go down to the bottom part, and here's where we see, uh, comparison with the city income tax. Looking at the three components, the individual, the business tax, and, uh, and the withholding. We can see that individual is, is down, but that's just, that's primarily a function of when people file. Uh, come the, uh, the state that has at the end of, uh, of, uh, April, we'll have a much better idea there. Uh, likewise with the business tax, although I'm not so much sure with the business tax. I'm not, not sure what the lag time is coming from the state and getting those business taxes to us. Uh, withholding, we can see, is, uh, compared to last year, down a little less than a percent, but over the three-year average is down, uh, or excuse me, I said down, it's up, up, uh, about three percent. So, again, we see some, you know, what's, one is high and one is low. Again, it's too soon to, to jump any conclusions. Uh, next page, again, we continue the comparisons from twenty to twenty-one, uh, with the utilities, uh, wages. For all, for all funds, wages, hospitalization, purchase power. Uh, we see purchase power is down. Don't we wish it would be down all year, but, uh, one, one never knows with that. The last part of that page is the transfers to the various funds. The, uh, and, uh, they, they are down a little bit, but then again, uh, not, uh, not significant. Uh, not significantly down. Look into it all, uh, overall, what's happening. Uh, next page is cash investment reconciliation. Uh, here we can see where our monies are, what financial institutions, what they are invested in. Uh, we touched a little bit about, uh, the, the interest rate is, is practically negligible. You know, like a half of a percent. You know, one might ask why bother? Uh, the, the problem, of course, is that the fees, um, you know, it would be wonderful if the interest would offset the fees, but that's not the case. Uh, late last year, uh, I know that the, the finance department, particularly the deputy finance director, was jawboning the local banks about, uh, uh, their, uh, their fees. She said that she's getting the, uh, the same, she's saying the same line from them. I, I don't, don't quote me on my part of her, but we're getting the same message from all of them. Uh, and, and her, she said, quote, "It's, it's been frustrating." Well, um, you know, I can imagine, but, uh, that's, uh, sadly, that's the situation. Continuing on, we see the very short, uh, form with the, uh, sort of rouse. Finally, the last page, we have a comparison of income tax, uh, the top being, uh, cumulative. Uh, the second one being monthly. Uh, again, looking at three-year average, the cumulative for the, uh, for the year is up, uh, two and a half percent looking at the three-year average. The, uh, February, the, the single month is down about ten percent in the three-year average. Again, um, one can't draw any conclusions based upon that. Uh, the second half of our meeting, uh, we, uh, we deal with personnel matters. Mayor, your role is the savings service director. You had nothing to report to the, uh, the committee. I do want to touch briefly on the OML email that came on Friday. If you haven't read it, colleagues, you, you really should. Uh, there's lots of information there. There are links. Some of the links don't quite work. I found the one that worked and got the information that I was, uh, looking for. And that is, it's an estimated, uh, dollar amount that the city of Shelby is going to receive, uh, through the American Rescue Plan. This figure is based on figures that came out of the House of Representatives before the legislation went on to the Senate and before it went back to the House for concurrence. So these, these figures will be movable based upon what the final language is. But coming out of the House, the estimation was, uh, that the city of Shelby would receive one point seven seven million dollars, uh, for, uh, from this piece of legislation. Uh, a few points from the email, that all funds must be spent by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So that's a four-year period. To recall, we have, my gosh, what was it?
Six weeks?
Something, a very short window in which to spend the COVID monies that we received then. So here we've got, uh, in the four calendar years minus, uh, you know, January, February, and whenever the monies get to us. Uh, the bill provides four eligible areas for expense. The first was to respond to the public health emergency. The second is to respond to workers performing essential work. The third is for the provisions of government services. And the fourth is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So I was particularly interested in that because that's something we're, uh, looking at. And the question was, you know, how would we, uh, fund, uh, broadband expansion in, in here in Shelby? So, uh, but that may well be one area that we want to look very seriously at, uh, at one point, I'll round it up, one point eight million dollars of what we might do as far as broadband. So, uh, again, it goes on for much, lots of details. Uh, I noticed too, there was an email that came from the OML today. There's going to be a Zoom meeting next Thursday, uh, at two o'clock, where they'll have someone from the National Library of Cities who will talk in, in much greater detail, to the extent that we noted detail now. You know, it's one thing for, uh, uh, Congress, or, you know, well, or even for the city council to pass legislation, and then we say, okay, administration, you make it work. And so that's, that's where we're gonna be at right now, is, uh, is how it's made to work. But I, I, you know, I've seen the nod from the finance director. I have no doubt that he will be on there. Unfortunately, I will be on duty at the pantry, uh, but, uh, Mayor, I'm certain you'll watch it, and I imagine if the, uh, the, uh, utilities director and the projects coordinator will watch that too, and find out, uh, how do we make, how, you know, what sort of things we can and can't do with this, with these dollars. So, Mayor, that is, uh, is my whirlwind report. If anyone has any questions, or if my colleagues or partners have anything to add, uh, please do.
Are there any, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Gates in regard to his report?
Or for the finance director, for that matter.
He, he hit the nail on the head pretty much. I don't believe he has anything to, to add to that.
Very good.
Mayor, I would move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statements, both dated, uh, twenty-eighth of February, twenty-twenty-one, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Sir. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a sec by Mr. Martin, that the combined financial statement and the cash and investment reconciliation statements, both dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGarvin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gates.
You're welcome.
Ms. Webb, um, the National Library meeting is, uh, April the fourth through the tenth.
Yes.
And I believe I'm going to deliver that proclamation on that fifth, uh, Monday, the fifth. So if there was some miscommunication, uh, to that, I apologize, but we'll be, I have the proclamation prepared, but I plan on delivering it on, uh, April the fifth.
Look forward to seeing you then.
Okay, thank you. And again, I apologize for some, uh, miscommunications here. But thank you for being here.
Yep.
And we'll look forward to seeing you the first, uh, meeting Monday.
Okay.
Thanks for working with Marvin Memorial Library. Thank you. Move forward to, uh, the Utilities and Treights Committee, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, at the, uh, meeting, we had a guest speaker, Mr. Mike Chambers of HomeServe, uh, to discuss the utility service line warranty program. Warranty programs to help residents avoid unexpected costly repairs that may arise to their water service line or sewer lateral. Home owners respond for further sewer lateral, uh, sewer pipe from the house to the sewer main and the water service line, the water line from the house to the shut-off valve by the water main. Uh, the OML has endorsed a warranty program and a copy of a letter, uh, received by Mayor Shag. Well, uh, explaining the program is, uh, was presented to us as well. Um, so I think, I believe everyone got this in their packet. Uh, we're gonna further internal discussions on this, so I would encourage everybody to, to look through that. And if you have questions, uh, direct them to either, uh, the mayor or Mr. Ensmann. Uh, but I'm not going to belabor them, because we didn't decide anything. It was just information gathering, a lot of that same information. So, um, instead of me just reading off slides to everybody, I figured we'd probably do that on our own and ask questions as we go through these internal discussions about bringing that to Shelby. A review of the generation rate. Generation rate is one of the components in the energy charge, electric bill that influences the cost per kilowatt hour. That rate is designed to cover the expenses for the operation and maintenance of the diesel generators. There's labor associated costs, diesel fuel, testing, E.P.A. permits, maintenance, and repairs. The rate has been reviewed and adjusted several times over the last few years. Previous electric cost studies and rate reviews performed by energy consultants have helped establish a rate, a rate platform that allows the rate to be reviewed and adjusted as needed. The current generation rate is, uh, point zero zero four five. So that's not four cents, it's like half a cent almost, or, uh, point four five cents. There you go. Uh, it was last adjusted in, uh, June of twenty-twenty. Uh, we went from, uh, point zero zero five five to point zero zero four five. And, um, we're, uh, running ahead of the revenue collected to where we can look at another, um, rate decrease. Um, there were several, uh, there were several, um, things that were presented to us. Uh, the financial review, our collections were four hundred sixty-four thousand, which was about a hundred seventy-six thousand above our expenses. Uh, so there was room there to, um, do a rate cut. And I'm gonna skip ahead to that. We had several different proposed, uh, rates, uh, going to, um, you know, four zero, three nine, three seven, three five. Um, and each of one of those, uh, would have been, um, uh, within the margins, uh, obviously decreasingly so. Um, and so the committee, uh, recommended that we go to drop it another, um, five thousandths of a, of, uh, of cent, and drop it down to point zero zero four zero. You can tell I did really well in math, figure out hundreds and thousands and stuff like that. The Olympics were gone this year, you know what I'm saying? I always catch up on that during the Olympics, you know, what's a hundredth of a second and all that stuff, you know? That's what you catch up on.
That, that would be ten thousandths.
Ten thousandths, thank you. Yes. The decimal system is a, a gem. Like I said, I blame it on the Olympics, man. Anyways, um, so, uh, we're dropping it five ten thousandths, uh, and, uh, to that point zero zero four zero, that was the recommendation. Uh, that will reduce our annual collection by approximately forty-eight thousand dollars when we use that average annual kilowatt hour sold. So obviously, if we use more, then it drops it by, um, as a percentage less, but, uh, we're going by that average, uh, and we'll be, uh, okay. So question is, it was saving people. Um, the average annual savings, uh, per thousand kilowatts, uh, at a residential rate is, uh, around six dollars. Uh, the big savings though comes in at our, uh, industrial rates. At four hundred fifty thousand kilowatt hours, um, that, uh, will save around twenty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, so it is, it is meaningful, meaningful in the aggregate, um, but, uh, there you go. So that is going to be coming to council. All right. Playing discussion for next month, we're gonna be discussing transmission capacity savings, uh, from the operation of our behind-the-scenes generators. Uh, so we're gonna be discussing the diesel generators and of course, our Shelby solar array. So I'm looking forward to that update, and I'll be to, to council. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Martin, are there any, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Martin in regards to his report? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, the savings figures, were those monthly?
No.
Annual?
Annual. Mr. Gates?
Six dollars annually for, uh, residential?
On, at, for, for a thousand kilowatt hours, so. In my household, I get a little bit more than fifty cents savings that you would get. So what we're looking at is the aggregate, which is the forty-eight thousand number, um, so.
Mr. Gates?
Well, it's an editorial comment, but it sounds like much ado about nothing.
I think it all depends on the usage, of course, you know, the more usage there is, the more savings there will.
Granted, but when I consider my constituents. Yeah, you know, yeah, we should all be grateful, you know, that $6 for a year, 50 cents a month. We shouldn't pat ourselves on the back for that.
Mr. Martin?
Well, it's one component, right? So this is one of several components that determine the overall rate. And the fact is that we're looking at it constantly to see if we can do more and more to get it fine-tuned to where we're not making profit, it's not the correct word in this, but where we're overcharging. So, yes, it is a small thing, but it means that we're not overcharging greatly. I mean, I think we would all be, it would not be a good thing if we were cutting it by multiples of that. That means that we've been overcharging significantly. So, yes, it is a small amount, but it also means that we've been overcharging by a very small amount.
Mr. Gates?
Well, you know, the hours go the other way, you know. I think one can argue we've been overcharging, when we see the huge nut, the huge balance in the electric fund.
I think in the future, Utility Committee needs, I think it's going to be on the full, what the, you know, contender plans are for, we've used the terms to stabilize and hopefully reduce our rate structure for our constituents, our rate payers. And I think that'll be, as Mr. Martin alluded to, it's going to be a continuing process of seeking, not only to keep them where they're at, to slightly lower them and keep our system in place, so. Next, now I think the next Utility Committee meeting, I think we'll have more news as well, unless it comes. Mr. Martin?
I will say before, you know, even a year into my being on City Council, we did not look at this on a very regular basis. And those numbers kept on going up and up and up. And even when Mr. Gates would press on, okay, what is the balance? Council got a, I'll say, very fluid answer. We actually do have a goal that we're trying to hit, albeit we're not doing as well as we can be, admittedly. But we also have a situation where we've looked at dropping expenses too, right? So there's two ways that we can reduce the rate. One is limiting expenses, one is cutting the excess. And our savings, cost savings within the apartment exceeded our goal to where we didn't make as much positive direction towards our goal. But we do have a goal, and we're trying to get it there, so, nobody's resting on their laurels. As was admittedly the case when I first came on City Council, I don't think any of us were looking at it as well. And that number just kept on going up and up and up and up, with no, no even sight. So we are, we are looking at that closely. And also looking at other ways that we can benefit the community with those funds, being that it is the electric and telecommunications.
More to come. Any further comments or questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, Mr. Martin. It's not on the agenda, but I thought Mr. McGlaughlin should say something about the committee of the whole meeting on March the 8th, 12:00, or this brief synopsis of that meeting, Councilman Martin. I'm sorry, McGlaughlin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Committee of the whole, let's say, the council met twice over the last month, actually. The first on the eve of February, we met for three and a half hours. And then on 8 March, we met for two and a half hours. So combined, to discuss the appropriations budget, we met for a total of six hours. If anybody is interested in some of those two meetings, just go to the city website under Government, further down under City Council, and then hit the tab, Watch Council Meetings Live Stream. You can, you can review them. So, at this point, the appropriations budget for 2021 is over $36 million. And tonight, here shortly, we'll be discussing that on August 8th, 2021.
Thank you, Councilman McGlaughlin. Any comments or questions for Mr. McGlaughlin regarding his report? If not, we'll move forward then to reports of city officials. I'll be my report, Mayor, past two weeks.
Excuse me, Mayor, there's a safety committee meeting.
Oh, oh, I had scribbled, sorry about that, right over top here. Mr. Gates will give the Safety Committee meeting report.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met on the 3rd of March. Chief Thompson reported that on the 13th of this month, the Ohio Fire Department was holding a crane rescue class at the Shelby Fire Department. There would be approximately 25 people attending, including people from other departments, looking about, you know, extractions when people get caught in crane elevators. We had an extensive report from the Health Department. Nurse Tiffany Ellenberger reported that as of that date, there had been 765 cases of COVID within the city. There were, at that date, nine active cases, none hospitalized, and there had been 30 deaths within the city. The city had received 200 doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID vaccine. That's the one-shot vaccine. And there were two clinics scheduled for this month. Just under 1,700 people had received both their first and second shots. The entire waiting list is completed. That was people from ages 60 to 99. She mentioned that she now has supply of the vaccine below demand. And that the roles, so to speak, were open to people ages 60 and above. And I noted that I think come May 1st, that's going to be, at that point, anybody who wishes the shot can call in. Also, it's been targeted, the, what's called the C1, or the 1C tier, that's targeted, both in terms of health situations people have, such as diabetes, what have you, and also the particular occupations have been targeted as well. I had asked about young people, children, and the vaccine. The Pfizer vaccine is for kids 16 and above. Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson is for 18 and above. Beth Conrad reported on the upcoming virtual site visit for accreditation. Indeed, that was held on last week. I understand it went very well. I participated as a community partner. She mentioned that nuisances have been sent off to the law director. Regarding food licenses, four places haven't yet paid. There's a building grace period, 30 days before the late payment. And then there's a 25% penalty. Food service licenses are effective March 1st of each year. So if there's anyone who goes 30 days after that, then they get to pay the 25% penalty for that. And she says, you know, that's usually substantial enough that no one forgets to do it the same time. Nothing to report regarding the jail, we heard. Captain Rapp is looking at the year-end report for the jail. The PD is looking at the annual national drug take-back day on Saturday, April 24, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. There, the drugs are to be in their original containers and no syringes. He noted that the department is currently one person short of patrol. Mayor, that's my report of the Safety Committee.
Thank you, Councilman Gates. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Gates in regard to his report? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you for bearing that for me. Glad you can, wish you had been there, but I'm glad you were doing what they.
Very good. No further comments or questions? Now, we will move forward to reports of city officials. Report to the Mayor. Past couple of weeks have been occupied with typical mayoral duties. As Mr. Gates mentioned, last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the Shelby City Health Department was examined by Public Health Accreditation Board in the final phase of the national accreditation process. The three-member panel conducted their site review virtually, using the Zoom platform. We feel we presented our department in a favorable light, and we are looking forward to the final determination sometime in mid-May. It takes that long to hear from FAB. In the area of COVID-19 activity here in the city of Shelby, we have had, and I'll put out a full report tomorrow, but I just received this by email from Ms. Tiffany Ellenberger. We've had in the last five days, 15 new cases. So that averages out about three cases per day. In that same time period, 14 cases have recovered. The total cumulative from March of last year of 800 total cases in Shelby, 745. Most cases have recovered. We are currently monitoring 21 active cases across the city. Zero hospitalized. There had been 34 COVID-19 deaths, 26 of those from long-term care facilities, and eight from the general public. So here's an idea where we're at. Since the Safety Committee meeting, Shelby City Health Department has administered 1,451 first doses. That's 1,451 first doses, and 1,158 second doses of vaccine for a total of just a little over 2,600. So our Health Department's done an excellent job of receiving and distributing vaccines. We are looking for those 50 years old and up, or if you have some health conditions that meet the criteria, we would advise you to call our Shelby City Health Department at 342-5226. And we'd like to schedule our next, we have two vaccination plans for this week. And we received another shipment of Moderna, another 100 of Moderna vaccines. So we'll be taking names and getting the list a little down, so please give us a call. Taxi service has resumed as of last week. We do have a backup driver that has years of experience in transporting clients, citizens. So we're back in service from Tuesday through Fridays, 8 to 4. So help us spread that word, all right? And that is my report. Are there any comments or questions for me in regard to this report? If not, we'll move forward. Mr. Eisner? I do believe it's a special day in the Mr. Crum? Oh, Mr. Crum, yes.
Thanks, sir.
I can wait and write your report.
That's right. You guys are going to have to wait for Gordon in anticipation. Yeah, we are getting fairly busy around my departments. Obviously, the income tax is really starting to pick up now, as we expect that too for the next four or five weeks here. Obviously, appropriations took a lot of my time. And now we move right into, as Mr. Gates spoke of, the Zoom conference on Thursday to figure out just what funds we may have coming in and how we may be able to use those. So we will review better on that. So staying busy. As far as the financials go, I think Councilman Gates did a fabulous job. It's so early in the year to tell exactly how things are going to show up. I will add to his report, because I forgot earlier, that the Deputy Director has been in contact with our hospitalization organization, and we are eligible for, to be able to skip a month. They do, they don't do partial months, they do full months. So we'll have to speak in the Finance Committee as to whether we should skip a month or wait to see how things play out for a little while longer. But that is definitely good news. I believe, sir, that is all I have. Was anybody have any questions?
Thank you. As a good news, bad news, you can skip and ask for a full, full payment, so we'll discuss that more fully. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? All right, now we'll move to Mr. Eisner. Paul, thank you. Business as usual in the legal field, no report. Thank you. Forward then to Mr. Gates, project report.
Thank you, Mayor. It's very brief. We are opening up our bids for our paving project this coming Friday at 10:00 a.m. So we're hoping for a good number there. And we're looking forward to appropriations getting passed so we can move forward with our other projects we want to get done this year, so more to come.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates in regard to this report? Mr. Martin?
Just an observation, we have a mounted camera now. So thank you to Mr. Gates for giving that for us. So we don't have this clunky tripod, so when we have the viewing public in with us again, we don't worry about them breaking sunshine records, which is a tricky record for. So, well done.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. And I want to again thank council for allowing us to get that asphalt advertised for bids earlier, so we hope that's going to yield great benefits. And we also did talk about salt today at our superintendent's meeting. Let's see the best way that we can move forward to make sure our bins are full. And so we'll be discussing that further as well, so. All right, we'll move forward then to new business. Is there any new business brought before council to see? There are none, we move forward to unfinished business. The future use of Main Street Fire Station is, there's, there's been no activity there. So that will be on our agenda next month as well, next meeting, rather. 59 West Main Street, what was formerly exterior maintenance, I did receive a word from the former owner that the transaction is complete. So that is now officially the property of the CIC of Shelby. So looking forward to great things in the future from 59 West Main Street. Charter Centennial Timeline, Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. There is something to share about the timeline. It was 100 years ago to, on, yesterday, on the 14th of March, that a petition was presented to the council of the then-village of Shelby, signed by 10% of the electors of the village. Said petition was in the words and figures as follows. Petition to the council of this village of Shelby, gentlemen, we, undersigned electors of the village, ask that you pass the necessary legislation on the question, shall in commission be chosen to frame a charter? In compliance of said petition, the council of the village of Shelby on the 15th day of March, 2021, 100 years ago today, duly pass an ordinance to provide for the submission to the electors of the village of Shelby, the question, shall commission be chosen to frame a charter? And for the election of members of the commission, which ordinance was duly approved by the mayor on the 15th day of March, 1921. And it goes on and on. I think that is something there. It says that the ordinance was duly approved by the mayor. Village mayors did not have veto power. They were required, and even today, they are required to sign legislation that is passed by the village council. So, but anyway, that 100 years ago today, the charter commission question was placed upon the ballot. There won't be an update until, until May.
Thank you, Councilman Gates. And thank you for relating to this interesting 100-year-old germ. Appreciate that. And on the finished business we brought before council, Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I asked that be included in the packet, a copy of Section 94 from the city charter, speaking of charter, dealing on sidewalks. And I appreciate having the codified section that Councilman Rob provided at the last meeting. I'm simply going to read the first sentence here, because the rest is detailed. Section 94, "The council may by resolution declare that certain specified sidewalks curving or gutters shall be constructed or repaired," and the rest is procedural. Tell us how this, how that's done. You will note there is no restriction here on this. So, simply because sidewalks were not installed at the time that the street was constructed So simply because sidewalks were not installed at the time that the street was constructed and houses were built, does not forbid or preclude the council from later on saying, there shall be sidewalks on that street. Now, I'm not advocating for it, but I wanted to make clear that the action of council is not overbitten somehow by an act of the planning commission. It's council's decision.
Any further unfinished business? All right, if not, we'll move forward to legislation.
Ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-one, amending chapter one thousand fifty electricity, section one thousand fifty point zero-two, rates and charges for service D, balance legalization rate rider of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for reading. I agree. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the third reading of ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-one passes its third reading. Will the ordinance be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-one, enacting section one thousand four hundred eighty-six point one-eight, stormwater management surcharge of chapter one thousand four hundred eighty-six, stormwater management of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the third reading of ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Will the ordinance be taken and passed?
I meant to say passes third reading, thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Our ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty-one, creating appropriations for the year two thousand twenty-one and declaring an emergency. Will the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, and the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes?
Will the ordinance be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Martin?
I just want to thank the administration and the finance director for another smooth appropriations process, and doing it in two parts, I felt was, I'll say, I don't know why we haven't done this yet. It just made for a Christmas and ability to focus. You know, after you go through like six hours, I can't remember sometimes like what we're discussing and why we, what the numbers all kind of go together. But breaking it up like we did was very beneficial, so maybe something to look at again in the future. I recall a success. Thank you to all involved. It's a very time-consuming process, but it is a very necessary process, and appreciate it.
Thank you. More comments, Mr. Gates?
Just a note here, on top of page two and top page three, there's a blank for the ordinance number. I did have a question for the finance director, I was wondering, as we all know, there's money to transfer all throughout this, and I ask, you know, if you can give a ballpark figure, what are the transfers? So we know what number is actually leaving the city treasury. We have about five million dollars in transfers. Let you know, one, transferred to the administrative fee, that's about nine hundred thousand dollars that comes from other funds into the general fund. All the income tax gets transferred in there and yon. So, you know, if we take out the five million dollars, we're still left with thirty-one million dollars, which is a substantial amount of money, but it gives us a more accurate figure of what the city is really spending. So, and I, you know, I've been through any number of these processes over the years, and this was the smoothest that we've ever had.
I agree. Could those ever work? Further discussion, Mr. Martin?
And I just beat it at horse. The ability, when we had the two different sections, if we had questions that had to be addressed, we could wait till the second time we met, we didn't have, we weren't forced to figure it out in a room, which sometimes took thirty, forty, five minutes to chase something down and all that, so it just, it made for a much smoother process, so.
I agree. Great process. Further comments? Mr. Cronin?
Yeah, I also want to thank you guys for all of your help through all this process. This is only my second go-around. Means a lot to me. Thanks to everybody for helping me get through it.
Yes, sir. Any further comment or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty-one passes, thank you.
Resolution number ten, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a three-year contract with an option to renew for up to two years exercise in one-year increments for tree trimming.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution ten, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, we'll be in the bid packet itself, page seven. We have the liability insurance. I wonder if those numbers are sufficient? One hundred thousand and three hundred thousand dollars?
Looking at the law director, I would imagine this is language that we have used previously.
I think it mirrors what we've done in the past, those numbers do seem low with the day standard, but I'm more of a higher insurance kind of guy, and you have more of a question for a utility director of what kind of damage a person could cause to city property, et cetera. It's only one hundred thousand for life or serious injury, but not be very much. I don't know what the standard of this industry would be, though.
Mr. Martin?
To put it perspective, to just be able to drive, drive somebody as a car service to the airport, you're required to have a million dollars. And I was, I would think that what they're doing with tree trimming around people's houses and properties and our lines and all that would be at least that amount, but I agree it does seem very.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, it does say of at least. You know, so we can look at those as the minimum, but a company trying to, you know, protect its bottom line is only going to go for the minimum. You know, they could get more. But, you know, again, if they're trying to protect their bottom line, why would they, why would they buy more if we're only requiring this minimal amount?
Mr. Martin?
And I think the devil's advocate would say, well, you don't want to, you don't want to burden, you know, small businesses from being to apply that. I understand that liability insurance is not a cost prohibitive insurance. It is one of the cheapest forms of insurance that exists out there. So I, I would say that increasing that wouldn't provide that.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, not to put you on the spot, but I wonder if the project coordinator has a memory of what we are requiring in the paving project?
Give me a few minutes.
I asked that question, and I probably have a pack in here for my council meeting. Mayor, I have a couple of other questions, so maybe let's, well, we're looking at, I just knew we had here. On page nine, down at the bottom, second line from the bottom, so the bid prices are, and there's a choice, we are not, are or not subject to price adjustment, there's a choice made there. If we look up at alternatives, you know, it says alternatives are or are not offered, and both are blank, so I'm not sure what that's supposed to mean.
On page nine?
Yes, sir.
Where were those again? I was looking at whatever sheet.
Page nine, the second line from the bottom, you can see we have, we have multiple choice there. Bid prices are or are not subject to price adjustment, and are not has been chosen. But if we go up to alternatives, alternatives are or are not offered, and either one is
Mr. Gates?
I believe that would be when the bidder is submitting his proposal, he's going to say he is or is not, or are or not, offering any proposals in his proposal.
Well, that's, that's the bidder to supply the jacks.
We, obviously, we've made the one decision just for the bidder.
Fairly. Do you have information, Mr. Gates?
I do. Says for public liability, contingent public liability, for one person is five hundred thousand dollars, for one accident is one million dollars, and property damage, contingent property damage, for one accident is five hundred thousand dollars, and for all accidents
Mr. Ensmann? Are we going to put this out this time of year? Are we a little early perhaps? Would we have time to postpone and bring this up to fifty in April?
We can postpone. The current contract expires this month. We normally start with our pre-trimming in April, we try to get the nervous start to it, but it would not work if we postponed. So it could be a question for Mr. Phil Dixon as well, with our insurance office.
Bid opens April third, according to the packet. Bid opens April third.
Well, since the council passes the legislation, it'd be in, and the mayor signs it.
Well, I'm just saying, you said the contract ended in March, and we're not going to do this in early April, we're not going to start this in early April, because the bid ends at the end of April.
True. So we have some.
That's just more safe. We're right around the buck behind.
I would, they have to declare emergency in that instance if it, if it leaves council. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, just a couple of other things. On page eleven, the pop, it says Shelby Codified Orders, chapter eight eight zero, that's the old city income tax, it should be eight eight one. That number burned into my brain.
Thank you.
And on page fourteen, Mr. Fisher, fiscal officer, the resolution number is not correct, and that should be a blank there, or change to be this ordinance number, it makes, resolution number fifty-seven dash zero zero.
Is that noted?
And to the resolution itself, in the title, third line down, correction to the spelling exercise, the first C should be drawn. And with that, Mayor, I move the resolution to postpone until the next regular meeting of city council.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts to postpone this legislation to the next meeting of the city council. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
A motion to postpone passes. Now move to miscellaneous business, is there any miscellaneous business to grow up for council today?
Sorry, just to let everybody know, I will not be in attendance at the people's fifth
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I just wanted to say this is kind of a one-year anniversary of my everything kind of crazy with COVID-19. Longest year of a lot of our lives. Year ago, we were about to embark on like, I think, the largest march of all of our lives, doing the fact. And also, it is the eyes of March.
All right, thank you. Any other miscellaneous business? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, council adjourned.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Council is adjourned, a motion passes, council adjourned at eight twenty-seven. Thank you, Mr. Rob, for being on board, even though you're not feeling well. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Put them on the other jaw. Our discussion will be good.
I did not have a chance.